This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council Work Session Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
We do have eight people here, Michael John.
Tim T. Walt did an email and said he would not be able to meet.
Okay. So, okay. Here we go, our first budget session, which will be run entirely by Dale.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your flexibility in adjusting to this first work session. As you know, there's still a lot of other civic activities happening later this afternoon with the groundbreaking and then the poverty starting to start. So, real quickly then, before I turn it over to Jay, we'll just perhaps visit a little bit where we've been. As you recall, based upon feedback that we've received, this year we tried a couple of different things with the budget process. And with both the CIP and the budget, we held a meeting before the process actually kicked off for us internally. And the purpose of those meetings was to get some guidelines and principles and basically some boundaries that you were looking at from a policy perspective before we established the CIP and before we established the budget. So, if you recall, in June, we had that meeting and you supported and basically put forth to us some principles that we wanted to include in our budget this year, including that employees are our greatest asset, that we wanted our expenditures to be consistent with our vision and our values and our guidelines as it relates to strategic plan. And I know you all recall the strategic plan, and it's focused on jobs, infrastructure, the workforce, and then also having an organization that's basically organizationally stable. And then, of course, there was the principle of making sure that we match our operating expenditures with ongoing support of old revenues. So with that, it's just a little overview touching some of those principles that we went into this budget with. And I'll turn it over to Josh or Jay. Before I do that, I want to make sure that we recognize Josh and Christine and Jay for their work. This budget does not just happen. There's a tremendous amount of work and documents that go into even producing this behind the scenes, and so I really appreciate the work that they put into it. And for some of them, it was a new venture with all the turnover that we've had. There's a lot of new faces and new people that are working on our budget, and so they work really hard to put together what you have before you. And with that, Jay, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm going to pass around the presentation. I know some of you like to take notes on the slides, so if you want one, great, take one. If you don't, that's fine too. As Dale said, I'm going to go through a presentation of the budget, and I'm going to try to put many of the budget changes, in particular, in the context with both our strategic plan as well as the guiding principles that we discussed with the City Council in the first budget study session. So, I'm really going to try to link the budget document back to those guiding principles and strategic objectives that the City Council has already adopted. So, the first guiding principle that we talked about with the City Council was that expenditures should be consistent with division values, goals, and objectives of the strategic plan. The first of those goals and objectives contained in the strategic plan is to foster some economic development and redevelopment. And you can see how that was defined. That was defined as increasing the household income, job opportunities, and tax base in the city by emphasizing job retention, growing existing businesses, and investing in cultural, recreational, and leisure amenities. The second item within the strategic plan that we'll talk about is providing safe and functional infrastructure, and that we should focus on the existing and future infrastructure by developing five-year estimate of the city's capital and maintenance needs. The second item within the strategic, or third item within the strategic plan that we'll talk about is optimizing organizational structure and staffing. That is to prepare the city's workforce for future service demands. And the fourth and final item is prioritizing services and service levels. Build on and maintain a city organization that is financially and organizationally sustainable by providing the right services done the right way and in the most cost-effective manner. So, within the context of this year's budget, we'll talk about each of those strategic priorities contained in the strategic plan. The other guiding principles that we talked about in our first work session was using ongoing revenues to support ongoing expenses, not to use one-time funds for ongoing expenses. When you use one-time funds for ongoing expenses, it just builds you a hole for the next year, and it means you basically, when you start out with your budget, you've started already having to look for either other revenues or other expenditure reductions. Employees are our greatest asset, should be supported with competitive wages, adequate training, and appropriate equipment. And last, invest in technology when it improves efficiency, lowers operating costs, and improves service quality. So, I think there's some important keys in there, and that's we don't just invest in technology for technology reasons, but we invest in technology when it makes sense, when it leads to efficiencies, lower operating costs, and improvements in service quality. So, we've taken those strategic priorities and those guiding principles very seriously in the preparation of this budget, and it's through those lenses that we've reviewed each department's requests, and we'll go into more detail as we go through this. Some other items related to the budget that I want to get out on the table as a foundation, and many of you have seen these already, but particularly for the newer council members. When we talked about the tax levy, and you'll hear that term tossed around quite a bit, both tonight as well as over the next several months. What we're talking about with the tax levy is the total amount of dollars that must be levied in the form of a property tax to provide the services within our program of services. So, the tax levy is a dollar amount. You'll also hear discussion about the tax rate. The tax rate is simply the tax levy divided by the assessed value of the community. The tax rate is just math at that point. It's usually expressed as a rate per thousand dollars of assessed value, sometimes called a mil rate. In the case of this budget, our tax levy is a little bit over forty million dollars total for city health and library. Our assessed value is a little bit over four point five billion dollars, and if you do the division, we get a tax rate of eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, you'll hear tax levy, tax rate, talked about as we go through the presentation this evening, as well as over the course of the next couple of months. You'll also hear levy limits talked about. Levy limits, they're, it's a requirement of the state of Wisconsin that has been in place for quite a number of years, but under levy limits, a municipality is allowed to increase their tax levy over the amount it levied the prior year by the percentage increase in equalized value from net new construction. So, you hear us talk about net new construction. Net new construction is basically the increase in the assessed value of the community less the, any value that was removed from the community. So, it is, we're limited in how much we can increase the tax levy. The minimum is zero percent. They don't make you go negative, but there is no floor in the levy limits anymore. At one time, you know, there was a minimum of three percent. You could increase your tax levy three percent or net new construction. Well, that three percent floor was removed a number of years ago. So, for 2017, our net new construction was two point two three eight percent, which equaled a maximum amount that we could increase the property tax levy of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. It is important to note that post-2005 debt service is exempt from levy limits. So, it's not part of that maximum amount that we're allowed to increase the levy. It's on top of that amount. And the only way you can exceed levy limits is through approval by the electorate in the I don't think we'll probably get into this a whole lot, but another nuance with levy limits is that if a municipality increases fees or establishes fees for certain what are called covered services, you have to reduce your tax levy or your levy limit by that same amount that you're going to generate in revenue from those fees. The covered services include garbage collection, fire protection, snowplow, and street sweeping, and stormwater management. So, if the city of Eau Claire had not created a stormwater utility prior to July 2nd, 2013, and the city then decided to create one, any revenue generated from that stormwater utility would reduce our levy limit, but thankfully, we have a stormwater utility in place. There's another program that I want to talk about that I don't think I've talked to you about, but it's been in existence for quite a while, and that's called the Expenditure Restrain Program. We had some conversations earlier this year when we were making some amendments to our budget about this program, but to qualify for, a municipality is only allowed to increase its general fund budget by the CPI change for the prior toll funds, plus sixty percent of net new construction. So, levy limits relates to the amount that we can levy in our property tax. Expenditure restraint relates to the amount that we spend, and they're different. To qualify for a 2017 payment, the increase in the general fund budget must be less than two point one percent. And in 2017, we estimate that was received a little bit over one point one million dollars by qualifying for the Expenditure Restrain Program payment. So, that's a payment from the state of Wisconsin that comes to municipalities as long as they continue to qualify for it by keeping their expenditures below that limit. So, the 2016 revised, our 2016 revised budget, and I say for ERP purposes because they make some adjustments to that for debt service and some other things, but our 2016 revised budget for ERP purposes is currently a little bit over fifty-seven million dollars. We're currently about two point six million dollars under the Expenditure Restrain Program limit. So, we're, right now, we're well under the Expenditure Restrain Program limit. The 2017 budget that we've distributed to you is about fifty-eight point nine million dollars for ERP purposes. Now, the ERP calculation is based upon the prior year's budget. So, right, our 2017 ERP calculation is based upon the 2016 budget. If our 2016 budget stays where it is right now, it doesn't increase at all, the budget we're presenting to you this evening will be about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the Expenditure Restrain Program limit. Now, the way that we, the way that we, there's two ways that we can deal with that. One of them is to reduce the budget that we're presenting to you this evening by about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The other way that we do it is we increase the 2016 budget, which forms the base of the limit for 2017. And we do that not by spending more money. You don't have to spend the money. It's based upon the budget. If we increase the 2016 budget up to the limit, we'll be under the ERP limit by over two point three million dollars for 2017. It's probably as clear as mud. But really, what we would propose is that we increase the 2016 budget for the contingency line by that two point three million dollars. We're not going to spend the money. We're just increasing the budget by that amount. It keeps our base up for expenditure restraint purposes, just like we've talked about related to levy limits, how it's important to keep your base up for levy limit purposes. It's accomplishing the same thing and allowing future flexibility as far as budgets for the community go.
Can we stop?
Yep, absolutely.
So, what is, why was the 2016 budget revised in the first place and by how much?
It was revised by over two million dollars to accommodate the appropriation for the downtown park and structure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the 2016 budget, as we approved it, I thought was more like sixty-one million, but apparently it was...
Well, but there's some adjustments that get made, and debt service gets subtracted out, and then the other thing that gets subtracted out is shared services. So, we provide some services to the county, and those expenditures get subtracted out from that base. That's why I said for ERP purposes, because there's some adjustments to it.
Okay.
Probably answered this question, but if we amend this 2016 budget, and then the budget for 2017, as you're proposing it, is two point three nine under the limit. And changing the 2016 budget, or amending it, gives us more flexibility going forward. Why would we not have more flexibility if we increased the budget for 2017?
Well, this will, if we continue down with this approach, which is what I would certainly recommend, later in the year, in 2017, we'll come back to the City Council and ask you to do the same thing. So, you know, probably at budget adoption time, and that's what we've kind of thought through a little bit, is that when we, before we ask you to adopt the budget, on the agenda we'll have a resolution to amend the 2016 budget, increase that amount, and then probably at the same time in 2016, we'll do the same thing in 2017, the same thing in 2018, just to keep, again, to keep that base up for expenditure restraint purposes. Right now, there's really no need to, I mean, we could, I mean, we could increase the 2017 budget, but there's really no need to right now.
So, this is just an accounting maneuver that would allow us to give about one point two million from a state agency, is that correct?
Basically, basically.
It doesn't change the expenditures?
Doesn't change how much we're going to spend.
Until they figure out that we need to do it?
You know, my research is municipalities have been doing this across the state.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's within the program rules.
And it's really an incentive for the state to keep your spending to the two point one percent, and as long as we're in that, we're satisfied with that.
Yeah. Yep. So, wanted just to talk a little bit about some, what I'm calling workload indicators. Just give people some sense of how the community has changed in the past fifteen years. The size of Eau Claire has increased from about thirty square miles to thirty-four square miles, about almost thirteen percent. The miles of streets in the city that we maintain and sweep and provide all the services that we do on has increased almost nine percent from three hundred and eighteen, nineteen miles to three hundred and forty-six miles. We've got about fifteen percent more improved parcels within the city than we did in 1991. We have almost doubled the number of parks that we had in 1991. We've gone from nineteen parks to thirty-six parks. Means we have to maintain all those parks. We have to mow the grass. We have to empty the garbage cans. We have to maintain the equipment. In terms of park acres, our number of acres of parks have increased by about seventy percent in the last fifteen years. EMS responses increased from about twenty-three hundred to almost seventy-three hundred. Two hundred percent increase in EMS responses. Fire responses have actually gone down. That's a good thing. I mean, we want to see fire responses go down. That shows that, I think, to some extent, it shows that our prevention program is having a positive impact. Police calls for services have actually gone down. Same thing. We're much more focused on community oriented policing and problem solving, and so we're trying to prevent crimes from happening as opposed to having to go out and be reactive. We're being proactive. Part one index crimes have gone down by about thirty, almost thirty-six percent. CAD incidents, those are calls to our 911 center, and this is data that's, actually the base is 2004 rather than 1991, because that's, that was when our newest system was installed, but those have increased by about sixty-two percent. So, you know, from 2004 to 2015, we've had about a sixty-two percent increase in calls to the 911 center. Network devices.
Is that countywide or is that just calls from within the city?
That would be countywide. Network devices, PCs, tablets, those sorts of things, in 1991, we had ninety-eight, if you can imagine that. In 2015, we have five hundred and nine network devices, over a four hundred percent increase. Water customers have increased by about thirty-five percent. Miles of water main that we have to maintain and make sure are clear so people have water to make sure they're not frozen have increased by about thirty-two percent. And our number of fire hydrants has increased by about forty-seven percent. So what? Every year, though, we have to go out, we have to exercise the valves on those fire hydrants to make sure that if there's a fire, we've got water at that fire, at that fire hydrant. So, all of these items require people to go out and perform some sort of maintenance.
Not water customers, is that essentially the number of households, you know, if you're multi-family?
Households and businesses.
Water users.
Water members.
I think there's even more households in the city than businesses of twenty-six thousand.
Well, no, we've got, if you go back to the improved parcels, we've got about twenty-one thousand improved parcels in the city, so some of those have multiple meters.
Jay?
Yeah.
Can you tell me again, what's this CAD standard?
Computer aided dispatch.
And do we think that increase is because of pocket dialing, self-handling?
There's a certain amount, there's a certain amount of that, there's a certain amount of hangups, but I think what, and you may hear this from great later, what you, what we found is that people more and more are using 911 for non-emergency calls. They don't know who else to call, so they pick up, they call 911. And so, that's, I think that's been one of their largest increases in call volume is non-emergencies.
What's the significance of 1991?
Fifteen, it's just fifteen years.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, sorry, I can't handle. Pretty bad at the finance side.
Chair, go in the right chair.
I appreciate that, Dave. I had a question on that as well. I don't see the slides on here that are talking about where our property tax base was back in 1991, and/or our budget has increased ex amount. Is there a comparison on that?
I didn't put that together. I've got comparisons. I guess there'll be one in here that goes back that far, but generally, I haven't been going back that far. Transit route miles are up about a hundred and forty-five percent. Passengers carried on our transit system have almost doubled. Library circulation has gone up about thirty-one percent. Library volumes have gone up about eleven percent. So, anyway, I'm just, all I'm doing is trying to put some things in context that, you know, the amount of stuff that we do, the amount of stuff that we have to take care of, in some cases, has increased dramatically since 1991. So, we're going to talk, go back to our guiding principles and our strategic plan again, and now we're going to talk about those in relationship to the proposed 2017 budget. The first of those items within the strategic plan talks about fostering sound economic development and redevelopment. For the, over the last twenty years, for more than twenty years, economic development activities have been funded from a one-time source of revenue. We received a large federal grant many years ago, and we've been using those funds to fund positions within economic development, to fund amounts that have been given to the RDA for property acquisitions, and to fund the outside organizations that we fund with economic development, from the Economic Development Fund, DEKI, and the Innovation Center. So, we've been funding, using one-time funds, and those funds are almost gone. This day had to come at some point. The available fund balance for economic development is estimated to be about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars at the end of 2016. That's actually up a little bit from where we, where we thought it was going to be, but it still, doesn't leave us a lot of money to continue the economic development program as they have been in the past. Later this year, there'll be an economic development summit to discuss, you know, between the city and the other partners, the county, the Innovation Center, all our other economic development partners, to discuss ongoing economic development initiatives and funding. But in the meantime, in order to create a more sustainable funding mechanism for economic development and to continue our program of services for 2017, we have increased the general fund, this budget increases the general fund transfer to economic development by sixty-nine thousand dollars so that we're fully funding the existing positions within that. This would provide, this combined with the previous amount we were transferring of a hundred thousand dollars will completely fund Mike Schatz's position and half of one of the other economic development positions that's currently funded with the Economic Development Fund. So, this will create a more sustainable, long-term strategy for funding the positions within economic development. We're also proposing the use of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in one-time, what we're calling one-time funds, for to fund DEKI, the Innovation Center, and the Eau Claire Area Development Corporation. And lastly, we'll be proposing that we use two hundred thousand dollars of the funds that have been set aside for the Gateway Industrial Park to fund future RDA acquisitions. Within the Economic Development Fund balance, one million dollars has been assigned for future property acquisitions associated with the Gateway Industrial Park, and we'll be proposing, as I said, the use of two hundred thousand dollars of that one million dollars to fund RDA property acquisitions. We hope that these, we hope that these changes will get us through 2017, and then we hope that the Economic Development Summit will craft a more sustainable funding mechanism within Eau Claire County. One of the other, the second item within our strategic plan is providing safe and functional infrastructure. The proposed 2017 budget continues all our funding and our service levels for our ongoing maintenance programs, both building as well as street maintenance. We have increased equipment rental rates by three percent, which generates about ninety-four thousand dollars, or costs the general fund about ninety-four thousand dollars to provide additional funding for the replacement of maintenance equipment, dump trucks, end loaders, those sorts of items that are part of the, part of our rolling fleet. In prior years, we held rental rates constant, and this is, believe now, we're in the second year of a seven-year strategy to increase our rental rates so that we can fully fund the replacement of equipment. We fall behind in the replacement of our equipment, very frankly, in some of its, you know, some of the maintenance costs are starting to escalate because we've deferred the replacement.
And those, those are the rates that you're charging individual cars?
Yes.
In the internal service funds. So, it's an internal service fund, for example, all of our police cars are owned by this internal service fund, and the police department rents those vehicles, and the money going in to that fund, again, has been flat, but of course, the expenses to replace it have really gone up.
Gas prices go up.
So, this is, this is an attempt over time to make sure that we're properly funding and adequately funding this.
And lastly, our, you know, we talked about this earlier this year during the work session's capital budget, but our capital budget emphasizes maintenance projects. But our capital budget emphasizes maintenance projects, as we talked about. And those maintenance projects comprise nearly eighty percent of the funding within our, within our capital budget, which, again, for two thousand and seventeen, you'll also be adopting as part of this program of services.
And that's on the back from most years?
Yes. In fact, eighty percent's actually a little bit low. And that's partially being driven by a proposed addition to the HOBS Ice Center, which I don't think is probably actually gonna happen at this point because the NAHL team, we haven't secured one at this point, so. Our third, third item within our strategic plan is optimizing organizational structure and staffing. So, in nineteen eighty-seven, we had about five hundred and three total employees excluding library and health. And in two thousand and seventeen, we have, we're proposing four hundred and ninety-four. If we take a look at.
Just keeping that in perspective with all of the growth of those other numbers that take away. We actually have fewer employees now than we had. Actually, if you go back to nineteen eighty-one, we still have few employees and we have to, maybe see the growth of what we're expecting.
Does it include, like, these fire?
Yes. Yep, yep. So here's, here's the makeup of those numbers. General Government in eighty-seven, they had about seventy-one employees. In two thousand and seventeen, about sixty-six. In Public Works, we had about eighty-one employees nineteen eighty-seven. Right now, we have about sixty-one employees. Parks and Rec, we had about forty-six employees in nineteen eighty-seven. We've got twenty-nine now. We've got almost double the number of parks. And eighty percent more acres land. Enterprise funds, that's water, sewer, stormwater. We've got in eighty-seven, we had ninety-five employees and about ninety-four employees in two thousand and seventeen. So that hasn't changed a whole lot. Our internal service funds, seven and a half employees in eighty-seven, a little bit over ten in two thousand and seventeen. In fire, we had about ninety employees in nineteen eighty-seven and about ninety-four employees in two thousand and seventeen. And then in police, we had about a hundred and twelve employees in nineteen eighty-seven and a hundred and forty in two thousand and seventeen. So overall, I mean, there's been, there's been movement between, between divisions and departments. But overall, our staffing level is still below that, which it was in nineteen, in nineteen eighty-seven. We have a stated goal of seven point six employees per thousand population. And the last time that we were extremely close to that line was in two thousand and eight. But as you can see, the trend in the number of employees has gone down and continues, and continues to go down despite the increases in some of those workload indicators.
Jake, did you have a comparison of services?
I've got a comparison coming up, coming up towards the end, that will compare our staffing to staffing others in other communities.
Why is that our stated goal?
That is in, I, that I don't know. It's in the budget document, in the city council section of the budget document, I believe, that states the goal of, but I don't know where, I don't know where it came from.
I'm sure it's very thoughtful.
I'm sure it was, extremely thoughtful.
Dave, you don't remember saying that? See, when you missed, then it's not that, we probably did it with a different try.
Thoughtful.
It's very thoughtful.
The proposed two thousand and seventeen budget, as I indicated before, fully funds the one and a half positions in economic development. And we had, this budget does propose the additional police liaison position in partnership with Eau Claire School District. But just yesterday, we were informed that we did not receive the COPS grant for which we had applied. So, that, about twenty-two thousand dollars, we will be proposing that rather than using those funds for the police liaison position, that we add that to the small amount of money that we had planned to use for technology, specifically smartphones and data plans. And we can talk more about that, we can talk more about that. And also, within this proposed budget, we do implement the reorganization in Public Works by creating business analyst position. We would plan to fill that position effective June first of two thousand and seventeen. And that has a net cost to the general fund of twenty-five thousand dollars. That position, we would propose to split the cost between the general fund as well as water and wastewater because we expect the individual would be doing work in all of those, in all of those areas.
Jake, could you define that position and what the benefit is? Because some of the people have heard about that on the public, why a reactive position?
Yeah, I'm gonna refer to Dale on that.
So, the, you have one of our largest departments in Public Works, Parks and Rec, or hopefully next week, Community Services. And it has a series of division heads that are, you know, operational in nature. And when you look at some of other departments, like, like police or in the library or the health department, they have business managers. They have somebody that helps the operational people with their budgets. They write grants, they make sure that the grant paperwork is, you know, compiled and, you know, put in on time. They'll do analysis. So if you're trying to do a fiscal analysis of, you know, how much does it cost us to maintain this park? Or how much does it cost us to, you know, an individual that, you know, skill set is able to, you know, to help, help that department with those types of things. So, a lot of purchasing, you know, would be done, some of the paperwork and things that are currently done by the division managers. But basically, you've got, you know, a very large department that, you know, doesn't have, you know, a person that's designated with kind of those administrative and, you know, budgetary and financial analyst type, you know, skill sets. It used to be there years ago, and it was a position that, you know, was eliminated at one point. And even then, it was, it was, wasn't called a budget manager, but the, that's the idea of what we'd like to see.
Is these very effective grant writing that weren't paid for?
Absolutely.
Or she, he or she.
Yes. It's our hope that over time, you know, certainly with the grants and things, that the position, you know, where these is managed to be funded through, increase. Because there's a lot of grant opportunities when you think about that world of community. And they go after, you know, the ones when they can. But if you have someone that has some of that expertise, I think we can be a little more effective in getting and maintaining and take care of the paperwork that goes with those grants.
Well, we'll be hearing a little bit more about the police liaison position later, or can I ask you a question now?
Go ahead and ask me now.
Okay. I, can you talk a little bit about maybe a discussion that happened with the police department so that they said, yeah, we can, of course, this not happen?
Yeah, so this is a grant that would have paid for, the police liaison position is a, is a position where during the school year, the officers are assigned to the school. We get the officer a hundred percent in the summer, and it's split fifty-fifty between the school district and the city. And I believe this would have paid for the first, was it three years? It would have paid for the first three years.
Actually, you know, it would have paid for a third.
Each year.
A third of each year.
Yes.
And so, we would have eased our way, but by year four, then we would have been paying a full fifty percent of the position in the school district.
And as I understand it, the way that, we currently have four liaison officers, one at each high school, and then, and then we have one at two of the three middle schools. This would have provided a, would have allowed us to have one liaison officer at each of the middle schools. And then those middle school liaison officers would also do some, some work and some outreach with the elementary schools that feed those, that feed those middle schools. And it was, you know, it was a new position. We don't have it now. So it's, this isn't taking away a position that we, that we currently have. Certainly, it's something that the, that the chief would like. And it's something that, you know, with, you had to get out of the COPS grant, to have the partnership with the school district, it allows you to face that position and, or the cost of that position over a number, over a number of years. But you can, certainly, you can talk more to the chief directly about that when, when we have the budget.
Which, and they've been hopeful to get it, but with some of the events in Milwaukee, apparently, all the grant funding got pulled from all the cities and everything's going to Milwaukee in that program. So I don't know, Matt or Kelly, if you want to add anything to what you're saying?
Well, they got about one point eight million dollars to Milwaukee for them, so they got everything.
And we were, the city was only planning on having this contingent of five receiving the grant. Thank you very much.
Let's see, moving on to the fourth objective or strategic objective within the strategic plan. Prioritizing services and service levels. Build on and maintain a city organization that is financially and organizationally sustainable. So now we get to go into the numbers. So the two thousand and seventeen operating budget, as usual, has quite a number of revenue sources. About sixty-four percent of the budget comes from property taxes. Property taxes, as we talked about, is the single largest source of revenue in our general fund budget. Shared revenues comprise about ten percent. Other intergovernmental revenues comprise about nine percent. And then our other sources just kind of decrease from there. We've got charges for services, licenses and permits. We've got charges to both within, inter and intra-governmental. But taxes, property taxes, shared revenues are, you know, over, over seventy percent of this, of our general fund revenue sources.
Jake, I think since I've been at city council, your shared revenue has been cut off since.
We'll see that. Yeah, we'll talk about that in a second. We don't. In, in two thousand and eight, shared revenues represented about fourteen percent of our total revenues and twenty-one, seven percent of our non-property tax revenues. And from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen, shared revenues have been reduced over one point three million dollars or twenty-one point six percent. If I go back further than that, they'll even go down, they'll even go down more. But, you know, even, even since two thousand and eight, they've gone down, gone down quite dramatically. This graph shows our total revenue sources and how they, how they were comprised. As you can see, back in nineteen ninety, about fifty-three point six percent of our revenue came from shared revenue. That's that big blue bar. In two thousand and seventeen, nine point nine percent of our revenue comes from shared revenue. And, you know, what's occurred, you can see that the green bar, which is property taxes, back in nineteen ninety, represented about thirty-two percent of our general fund revenue sources and now represent about fifty-seven point six percent. So there's been a huge shift between shared, as, as shared revenues have been cut, property taxes have correspondingly, correspondingly increased. The amount for other revenue sources has fluctuated, but it's generally been somewhere in that thirty-five percent range. It really, it's gone up and down, but it hasn't changed significantly. If we look at other communities within, within the state and their shared revenue sources, as you can see, up at the top, Beloit gets almost four hundred and fifty-eight dollars per person in, in shared revenue coming into their community. The average amongst these peer cities is about two hundred and thirty-six dollars. And Eau Claire's at a hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents.
Why?
Why? Well, first of all, the shared revenue formula hasn't changed in many, many years. Insured revenue was, was designed as a, as a wealth redistribution formula. And so it redistributes wealth from the more affluent communities to the less affluent communities, which is why Beloit does very well, Milwaukee does very well, Racine, Kenosha, those areas do very well. But communities like Eau Claire, which have comparatively fairly good incomes, don't do very well on the, on the shared revenue scale.
But if our, if our property taxes had been higher at the time the formula was set, we would have.
The shared revenue formula didn't reward spending at the time. But again, it hasn't, hasn't changed in fifteen, twenty years, something like that.
But I remember that times, doing the whole way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we went fifteen or seventeen years without a rate in our tax rates.
In terms of general, on total expenditures, about fifty-seven point four percent of our total expenditures are people, personnel. We've talked about that, and people are a very important asset to us. About twenty-six percent is other financing uses. And when, when we talk about revenues and we look at the revenue, the revenue page, there's going to be, there's a little bit of a change in this year's budget, how we're accounting for and showing the property tax revenue for the health department and for the library. The, in the past, we have not shown those as general fund revenue because they've gone directly to the library and the health department. Because of some changes in the interpretation of the expenditure restraint program rules by the Department of Revenue, we're now showing them as general fund revenues and then we're showing a transfer from the general fund to the library and the health department. So basically, those, that revenue is coming into the general fund and is going right back out of the general fund into the library and the health department.
Where before it didn't run through us.
It didn't run through us. So that's why when you see this other financing uses as big as it is now, that's why. Because there's about, you know, about five million dollars in, in transfers now out to the health department and the, and the library that weren't there before. If we just look at operating expenditures, so now we're taking out, we're taking out debt service, we're taking out the transfers to the library and the health department. We're taking out, you know, any of our other transfers to, you know, to the Innovation Center, those sorts of places. If we just look at what it takes to operate city government and provide the services that we provide, about seventy-eight percent of that is people. Fourteen percent is contractual services. And then, as you can see, small amounts for utilities, fixed charges, supplies. But, but people, you know, that's what we do. We're in the service business and that requires that we have, have, have people. If we look at the general fund total expenditures by department, about forty-two percent of all of our expenditures are public safety. Public Works is about thirteen percent, and you can see the others, general government, twelve. Debt service is about twelve percent. But Public Works, public safety comprise the two largest departments in terms of our total expenditures. Once again, if we just look at our operating expenditures, public safety represents about fifty-five percent. Public Works, about eighteen percent. General Government's still about twelve percent. If we look at our spending per capita compared to our peer cities, in these, in these numbers, our two thousand and fourteen numbers, we get these numbers from the, from the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance. And there's always a, you know, we just got the new book, but there's always a two-year delay between when they, they publish their numbers. But the average of our peer communities in terms of spending per capita is about a thousand dollars per, per person. The high is La Crosse at one thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars per person. The low is Oshkosh at eight hundred and twenty-six dollars per person. Eau Claire's sitting at about eight hundred and eighty-five dollars per person. So in terms of spending, operating spending per capita, we're about a hundred and seventy-five dollars per person, less than the average of our, of our peer communities. And sitting down there in a group of about five that are, that are among the, among the lowest. Our fund balance. This graph shows our fund balance from two thousand and eight through two thousand and seventeen. You can see that it has fluctuated. Two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, we're sitting at about twenty-five million dollars. We're projecting that the year end two thousand and seventeen will be about twenty-two million dollars. That assumes that we spend all the capital money that we've included in this budget. And it also assumes, well, basically assumes we spent everything in this year's budget, that we don't under expend on the, on the expenditure side, and that we don't over-realize our revenues. If we look at that in terms of the city council's. If we look at that in terms of the city council's fund balance goal, our goal is to be between fifteen percent and twenty percent of our subsequent year's expenditures. As you can see, we are well in compliance with, with the city council's fund balance goal. In fact, we're sitting at about twenty-four point seven percent. We're projecting about twenty-four point seven percent at the end of 2016, which is four point seven percent above the, the higher end of that goal. So let's go back to our, so we've spent a lot of time here talking about how this budget relates to the strategic plan. One of the other guiding principles that we used in this budget is to use ongoing revenues to support ongoing expenses and don't use one-time funds for ongoing expenses. This budget does, does not propose the use of any fund balance for operations. We've got a, what I'm calling a cyclical decrease in elections expenditures, and we're handling this a little bit differently this year than we have in the past. Every other year, we have either a gubernatorial election or a presidential election. And in those years, our election expenses go up dramatically just because there are additional elections and because of how busy the polls are. And then in the, in the opposite years, our elections expenditures, well, they, they go down. There's about a $264,000 difference between a presidential year and a, and a, or gubernatorial year and a non-presidential or gubernatorial year. So what we decided to do this year, for 2017, because we're going to be at one of those lower years, is to use that $264,000 to, to fund the economic development agencies that we talked about before. Use a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but to fund those agencies, again, hoping that that's a one-time expense to continue. And also use seventy-six thousand dollars to fund one-time equipment needs. In that way, we don't, we haven't built ourselves a hole for 2018 because 2018, we just won't fund the economic development agencies from this source. Those were one-time equipment needs. We don't need to fund those again. And we can allow that elections budget to go back up for the gubernatorial election. So this is going to be a pattern that you'll see in the future, I think, is in these off, I guess, these off-years, if you will. We use those dollars to fund some one-time expenses and then in the next year, those one-time expenses go away and the elections budget can flow back up. Did you have a question, Councilman?
Uh, yeah, I guess I do. The economic development expenditure, $264,000, one-time expense, not an ongoing expense.
What, we're viewing that as a one-time, to get us through 2017. And then hopefully from the economic development summit, there'll be a new funding strategy devised for economic development within Eau Claire.
Because the fixed...
I'm not opposed to spending money on economic development. It just makes sense to me to project an average amount for elections. If you don't, I mean, if you don't spend it one year, you'll spend it for next. Wouldn't that make more sense?
Well, we, we don't usually carry over money. So, you know, at the end of a fiscal year, that money goes away. So if we just budgeted a level of money for elections, you know, in those off-years, we would have to, we would have to carry over that money to have it available on the subsequent year. At the end of the year, everything just goes back into fund balance unless the council approves a carryover request.
Following up on that, so that means that if we don't find a way in the summit to come up with a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, we have dug a hole because that is an ongoing expenditure unless we cut back the economic development department. We're not talking about buying land. We're talking about people costs here.
Well, this is, this is the money that we use to fund the innovation center, to fund DEKI and to fund, yeah, so it's, but yes.
Son, sixty-nine thousand you talked about earlier.
No.
Well, go ahead.
No, no, it's not. The sixty-nine is, is ongoing for the people. This one eighty-eight is just for the agencies.
Okay, so part of, you know, so we're, we're out of money for the economic development. The sixty-nine, it goes and goes over and is sustainable and taking, you know, is affordable for that. This other shift is, is, is again a different way of looking at the way we do elections. Whereas, you know, previously when we had an election year that required an increase in the budget with levy limits, that meant really all the other departments had to, you know, cut back in order to fund the elections of that year. By turning this around where we are funding at the election level, then that means in the off-years, that's going to give us the money for some one-time expenditures and then, and not have to squeeze all the other departments the years that we do have elections. And for this year, kind of this year, where we're trying to figure out where we go with economic development, you know, since it is the off-year, we'll use it for that. And we'll have to see where that economic development summit goes and what we want to do with it and, and, you know, we'll address that situation next year.
But it is, this was a source of, of funding for, to increase the fund balance or spend less of it. And now that will go away.
No, no, it wasn't. It was built, it was built into the base budget in those off-years. The budget didn't go down by that amount.
So everybody squeezed.
Everybody squeezed again the next, the next year.
Oh, I see, okay.
So this provides a much more stable funding approach for that elections. And in the off-years, we'll provide some flexibility for one-time funding.
Well, you know, actually what Councilman Replink kind of suggested would actually work then, using a carryover thing. If you did run below the budget, but use a carryover each year, you would be able to provide the cash on a constant basis instead of decide for the year beginning tomorrow.
You, you could, you could do that.
And, and we don't know, I mean, that's what the summit is for. I mean, we don't know what the recommendations are going to be coming out of that summit, what the needs are going to be coming out of that summit. And as we go into the budget season, you know, next year, we'll have to look at where we're at and what we can, you know, what we can do or what we can't do and, you know, and address that kind of forward.
I have a question, just probably back to this expenditure restraint program. I'm sure this is a lesson I'll get to learn with this question. If we're going to amend, do a resolution to amend the 2016 budget and change that contingency line, and then we'll do that again at the end of the year, next year, why can't we build in a contingency line now with this budget so we don't have to do it?
Well, we do have a contingency line.
Why can't we increase it now?
We could, we, we could.
Part of it is that we want to adjust, there are, there are adjustments to the budget that happen throughout the year. And by waiting until the end of the year, we will be able to match it to only what we need. We won't overshoot it or overshare it.
Because we, we could adjust it now, but then we will have to adjust it regardless later.
Exactly what it needs to be anyway.
Because one dollar over and the...
We totally want to know.
One, one dollar.
Yeah, well, yeah. In fact, we had to figure, we had to have a conversation with the DOR about how they round. No, I'm serious.
And this, you know, depending on what happens with inflation, this may become less of an issue for us. Part of this is being good because of the very low inflation rates.
So as we just spent a little bit of time talking about employees, one of our other guiding principles is that employees are our greatest asset and should be supported for competitive wages, adequate training and appropriate equipment. Along those lines, the proposed budget includes a wage increase of one percent on January 1st of 2017 and one percent on July 1st of 2017. That has a cost to the general fund of about $400,000. We're continuing the implementation of the wage and comp study. There was one piece of that that we did not implement this year was that there were some individuals who previously did not qualify for step increases who with the new wage and comp study now qualify for step increases. So we're going to be implementing that piece of the wage and comp study as well. That's got a general fund cost of about $75,000. Now, this next item isn't an increase. It's just a, just to point out that this budget include, in total, this budget includes almost $270,000 in training funds. So we do invest, we are investing in our employees and in employee development. So, and it's not an increase, it's just a, just, just a total point out.
Jake, is that 270 available for all employees or...?
It's throughout, throughout the entire organization.
And that could range from going to a conference, continuing education, additional training.
Tuition reimbursement, you know, police training, fire training. Our code inspectors have to be, have to have so many CEUs. Our assessors have to have so many CEUs to maintain their certifications. So really, it's across the board.
And then employees work with their supervisor to say, hey, I'm interested in this and work on that one year. Thank you.
Um, this budget also includes a health insurance increase of one percent on January 1st of 2017. That has a general fund impact of about $65,000. And then employees would be required to contribute an additional one percent towards the cost of their health insurance. I think that gets us to what, is it like fifteen percent?
That's our goal. Do we have a goal?
Uh, we're getting close.
To our goal or we don't have a goal?
No, we're getting close, close. We don't, we don't have a specific goal set yet.
Seems like a really reasonable increase in health insurance.
It is.
Based on the private sector.
Yep. Our, our wellness program works.
And last of the guiding principles, invest in technology when it improves efficiency, lowers operating costs and improves service quality. The proposed budget that you have before you includes $45,000 for seventy smartphones and data and, and the monthly data costs. As I indicated before, we will propose using the funds that we had budgeted to use for the police liaison officer, use those for an additional thirty-five smartphones and data plans. What we're seeing is that more and more employees out in the field need to be able to communicate, oftentimes via text message or, or emails. We're particularly seeing this request within the police department so that officers are able to text each other because, you know, radio traffic gets monitored. Text messages can't. Text messages are also quiet. Doesn't involve any speaking. And you say, well...
Less of it adapts to spring to them.
Yeah, well, that too. You say, well, why can't they, why can't they use their, you know, why can't they use their personal phones to do that? Why do we have to buy smartphones? Well, we need to be able to capture those text messages. And part of this cost includes a, a text archiving system where the employee doesn't have to do anything. Basically, it gets sent through our network, our, it goes through the Verizon, the Verizon network. It gets ca, gets captured. So we have that text message. If it's, well, we have it to refer to in case we need it at some point in the future or if we, if we were to get an open records request for any, for any text messages. So we have that information and we need to do that to comply with the open records law.
Will that apply to city administrators as well?
Um...
Police department for text mess...
Well, so part of the, we'll see how far we can go with this because we want to. And as part of shifting that money over to this, because this was not going to be enough to, you know, to be able to fund all of the programs that we wanted to do with that. So what we're seeing is more and more demand and need for the text messaging and we just didn't have a way to capture it.
No, no. The auto, the automatic capture will only, only be on city-issued cell phones because they all have to be under the same plan to do that. Now, for example, I don't carry a city-issued cellphone. I have my personal phone. Very rarely use it for texting purposes. But for, for, for those people like me, we're going to need to what we're calling self-archive, which basically is if I send or receive a text, I need to forward it to my city email account. You can do that with a text message, forward it to my city email account. Once I do that, it's part of our email system and is archived. So rather than paying the cost to have that, you know, that auto archive and solution, we'll self-archive. For the police department, that doesn't work very well. You're out, you're out in the field, you're sending text messages to people and now you have to try to remember to forward it to your city email. That doesn't work very well. So we need to capture those automatically without any additional intervention.
We have other frontline employees that are out in the field, you know, our inspectors, assessors, things like that. So that's where we would expand some of our...
I have a question about using this for maybe emergency services. Sometimes if there's a sensitive call that an emergency responder has to take, well, we'll just say sensitive. And if they're disclosing everything over the radio and that's going to kind of give away some of the strategy and on how to help somebody, is this text messaging service trying to help with a legitimate workaround to still help whoever needs to be helped without disclosing things over the radio or...?
Yeah, I mean, potentially. It's just another way...
It's another tool. So they have the radio, they have the phone for voice, but then they can also, you know, use the text. It's another tool for people to communicate.
You know, and then there, yes, you all know, and there are other benefits to carrying the smartphone too. I mean, now you've got a camera. The smartphone's a camera. You don't have to carry a separate, a separate camera if they need to do something, you know, via the internet. They have the ability to do that from their smartphone without going back to their vehicle. So there are other ancillary benefits which get back into this, you know, improving efficiency and improving service quality in addition to just being able to text. That's a piece of it, but it's really a kind of a bundle.
We don't have body cams, etc.
Not yet.
That's correct.
Is there any time for those or...?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done some review and research into it and have kind of looked at some model policies for it. And it's kind of, kind of a project or initiative kind of in the air. Kind of balancing that, the archiving, transparency versus kind of the rights and privacy issues that are in science. We're kind of feeling out some other communities' approach to it and other moving forward with it, so.
We, do we have dash, dash cams?
We do. All of our park patrol vehicles all have mobile video systems inside of them.
And is that a policy in communities that normally is set through the police departments or through the police and fire or through the city council? How does that policy normally get set?
Well, we would consider that an operational policy. So it wouldn't be the police and fire, you know, commission. And so just like, you know, we're proposing to add the technology to the smartphones, you know, at some point we might fully recommend, you know, increased expenditures related to the, you know, to the body cameras. The, you know, the, the big expense and challenge with those body cams is the, is the storage of the data. It's not the cameras themselves. It's the, it's the massive amounts of data that then has to be stored. It's something we're exploring and maybe coming forward at some point.
So we're, we're getting, getting towards the end of things here. So now we're, now we're going to pull, try to pull everything together. Talked about some key characteristics of the city health and library budgets combined. Overall, our operations goes with all of those city services. It's about a 1.3 million dollar increase in the operating budgets, which equates to about 2.15 percent. The capital transfer increases by about $840,000. The reason for this is, isn't that we're spending more money. But last year, we reduced the capital transfer because we had fund balance in those capital funds. We had some fund balance within the capital funds that we needed to spend out. So we didn't need to transfer as much. Debt service is going up by about 1.1 million dollars or about 14 percent. Overall expenditures are going up by about 3.3 million dollars or about 4.6 percent overall. Non-property tax revenues are increasing by about 1.3 million dollars or almost 4 percent from last year. The property tax levy for operations is increasing about $736,000 or about 2.25 percent. The debt levy is increasing by about 1.14 million dollars or almost 20 percent. The assessed valuation of the community increased by about $87 million from last year. The gross tax rate, including both the health department and the library, is going up by about 24 cents per thousand or about 2.8 cents. about 24 cents per thousand or about 2.87%. And that translates into taxes on a $150,000 home, that increase of $37 per year overall. So that's what the proposed budget equates to in terms of increases and the impact on taxpayer.
Is that assessed valuation increase? That doesn't mean just new valuation, that's just how much more can you, through, all of our properties include, equaling $7 million.
All of our properties, and that comes from new construction, and it also comes from market, from market changes in property values. So, you know, every year, we go out and we, you know, properties sell, we take a look at those properties, and sometimes, sometimes there's an increase associated with that, sometimes there's, sometimes there's not, but nevertheless, that's, that's the total change in our assessed value as well.
And if it's taxable and non-taxable property?
No, just taxable.
It's taxable?
Yeah, we don't have a value on non-taxable properties.
Does that also include any equipment that's used for construction and...
Just the buildings.
Just the buildings.
So if we look at our peer communities in terms of property tax rates, again, this is 2014 data from the Wisconsin Taxpayer Alliance. The average of our peer communities is about $10.27 per thousand of assessed value. You can see the high was Racine at $17 per thousand of assessed value, the low being Superior at $7.80 per thousand, and Eau Claire is at $8.47 per thousand of assessed value. So once again, you know, we're in this, this group of four or five communities down at the, down at the lower end of property tax rates.
Question for you, Jan. And I know you put all these in all graphs and I thought you said Eau Claire was on the bottom. Is there a reason we don't do it in graduated order like you're doing the rest of them? For me, it'd be easier to visualize where we're at.
Sure, I could do it that, I just do it at the bottom so there's always, it's always there, so you know where it is, because I'm really comparing it to all of these others, but I could certainly do it that way as well.
It's a good blueprint.
It's a nice blueprint.
Nice blueprint.
So, as far as, as far as the next steps in this, October 6th, which is today, we're introducing the budget to you. I've gone through, gone through the presentation of the budget, and we talked a little bit about, a little bit about revenues. On October 11th, we'll have our second work session. At that work session, we're planning to review a number of budgets, city council, administrative services, city attorney, finance, human resources, risk management, landfill, development services, economic development, downtown, the RDA, business improvement districts, police, fire, and hazardous materials. So those are what we hope to cover at the second work session, a number of those will go pretty quickly. We are really hoping to have our division, our department heads to present their budget to you and take, you know, five minutes or so to talk about their budget and also to talk about what they see as their challenges in the next, in the next three to five years. What sorts of things do they see on the horizon that, you know, are issues that the city's going to have to, have to address. On October 18th, we have the third work session scheduled. Any follow-up from the prior work session? And then we'll start with public works of parks, water utilities, sewer, stormwater, parking, hogs, bare vacs, central equipment, public transit, Kelly Phillips Memorial Library, and the health department on the 18th, as well as community development, non-departmental and CDVT. We've got a October 25th work session scheduled if necessary. We won't, we won't know until the 18th whether or not we'll, we'll need that work session. November 7th, we've scheduled the public hearing on the 2017 operating budget. November 8th, we hope that the city council will adopt the operating budget, and then on November 22nd, we would have asked the city council to adopt the, adopt the property tax levy. So that's the, that is the proposed schedule. Questions? Stunned silence there, Councilman Replink.
We asked a lot along the way.
That's good.
Well, I think it's a very thoughtful and effective manner of dealing with a lot of issues that we're dealing with right now for this next year.
Thank you.
Other feedback, comments?
Just that, you know, the way that, kind of pay attention to what our priorities are, we'll be excited to see the council earlier this year. And it was very clear in the way they presented that that's the way that this budget is going. Those guys' principles are strong at work, and so I want to thank you for working with the entire council to help us through that prior consideration, so.
I wanted to, you know, try to make it clear that that is, that's, those are the lenses that we're, that we're using when these requests come back to, to kind of filter things.
And the opportunity for you in summertime to give us any bigger, you know, priorities or things that you want us to focus on. So our, our goal with this is that, you know, when we bring this forward, it is aligned, you know, pretty closely to what you've been doing, and what you've been telling us, and we've had the opportunity to do that so that, you know, it becomes very informational for you, but, you know, aligned with where you want to be going, what you want to be doing. Correct, what you want us to be doing.
Thank you.
Break some bread.
Go break some bread. Go pop some.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
This was a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council Work Session Meeting. This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067 or on the web at www.cvctv.org.